...signage at the entrance, as you can see in this photo. There's only one of those signs is allowed to be displayed now. Better signage and better identification for the museums would be an asset for the downtown area. This type of signage is appropriate for museum uses. When the main entrance to the museums is moved to Nassau Street in the future, only one banner sign would be allowed on Francis Street since the double banner signs are limited to the main entrance. All other street signage gets a 100-square-foot banner sign. Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 15th. The Commission recommended to City Council by a vote of 4-0 that an additional 100-square-foot banner sign be allowed at the main entrance. And to carry out the Commission's recommendation, the Council would need to approve Proposed Ordinance 15-10.
Thank you, Mr. Nestor. Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, as an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I will refrain from conversation and abstain from talking.
No doubt. If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to come forward to address this issue. To do so, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Mark Duncan. I'm here on behalf of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. I am joined by my colleagues Rick Hadley and Keith Johnson, and all of us extend our thanks to Reed Nestor for his assistance during this process. And we would also like to thank you, members of City Council, for your previous assistance and support in response to Colonial Williamsburg's request to revise asylum regulations for museums in 2012. With the city's support, we tastefully improved signage, adding new monument and banner signs to better orient, guide, and educate our guests. And I'm delighted to report the efforts are working. Since the new signage was installed, the museums of Colonial Williamsburg have realized 5% growth in attendance for two consecutive years. And this year, attendance is running 10% ahead of the same period compared to last year. But we think more can be done. Given the current single entryway through the Public Hospital of 1773, the museums are far too often referred to as the best kept secret in Williamsburg. You can think back to the first time you entered the museums and visited the museums. I certainly remember mine, walking down the stairs, entering the gallery, and my eyes looked up at Charles Wilson Peale's portrait of George Washington in awe and surprise. I couldn't believe the range of collections and exhibitions, and I know there are very many similar stories to that effect. So the museums are indeed an integral component of the foundation's educational offerings, and we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to showcase this cultural and economic asset to ensure we achieve the strategic objective of increasing visitation to the museums and to the city of Williamsburg as a whole. So we're here today to build on the success we achieved in 2012, to add a second 100-square-foot building-mounted banner sign at the main entrance to the museums front of Francis Street. We feel this will better serve our guests, provide a static balance to the existing single banner, and build awareness for exhibitions in a way that is consistent with the museum community. Many of them use large banners to help advertise changing exhibitions. We also feel that it is in the tasteful bounds and the scale of the additional banner is in keeping with the scale of the front lawn of the Public Hospital. So with that, we respectfully request your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to Council for a discussion and action.
I'd like to talk first today. This is, you know, I've spent a lot of time in the Francis Street, Newport Avenue area for the last three years, and the amount of folks that I went to school with that don't know that DeWitt Wallace exists and its vast collections, remarkable for spending so much time so close. Anything we can do to help bring people to that location, I'm glad to do.
I agree. I think, you know, adding these signs, just like the signs that we see in the Arts District and the signs that we see along Richmond Road during special events, kind of adds vibrancy. And I think to Mr. Duncan's point, the banners that have been added add that vibrancy. It lets people know that, you know, that is there. It's a destination, a place where you need to come visit. And I think adding this other sign, it does offer balance to the building and draws that much more positive attention to it, so I think it's well done.
I have to agree with positive.
As do I.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Ordinance 15-10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Abstain.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Thank you all. The next public hearing is PCR 15-008, the request of QuarterPath Associates LP to rezone 614 and 620 York Street from B2 Corridor Business District to PDH Planned Development Housing District. This is Proposed Ordinance 15-11.
Mr. Mayor, I want to get a seat in the audience as this is...
Mr. Nestor.
QuarterPath Associates is proposing to rezone 2.88 acres at 614 and 620 York Street from B2 Corridor Business District to our new PDH Planned Development Housing District, and that is outlined in orange on this slide. It's proposed to convert 60 of the existing 128 hotel units into 47 adaptive housing units called flats at QuarterPath and related uses, a leasing office, laundry and community rooms. This will result in a residential density of 16.3 units per acre, and the density allowed for PDH District is determined by City Council as a part of the rezoning. So if this is approved, that 16.3 density would be approved as part of it. The applicant proposes 42 efficiency units, which will utilize one existing hotel room, three one-bedroom units utilizing two existing hotel rooms, and two two-bedroom units, each utilizing three existing hotel rooms. So if you look on this slide in Building A, these are the one-bedroom units. These are the two-two-bedroom units. In Building B, the dark outline indicates the one, the efficiency units outlined in brown are the one-bedroom units. And in Building C, it's all efficiency units. And here is the laundry and the community room and the office, and the office is here. So this will be developed in three phases, as is outlined in your memo. The new PDH District, which was adopted on April 9th, allows a maximum of 100 adaptive housing units in the city and a maximum of 50 units in an individual project. This 47-unit project meets these thresholds and takes advantage of the city's new PDH District by converting 60 underutilized hotel rooms into 47 affordable adaptive housing units, which will help to fulfill housing needs in the city. The project also meets the basic criteria of the PDH District for this type of housing. Planning Commission held a public hearing last month and recommended that City Council approve the request as detailed in Proposed Ordinance 15-11. The PDH rezoning will approve this conversion, as I've just outlined, and will, the ordinance will have a number of additional conditions, approval of the submitted management plan, limiting occupants of the efficiency in one-bedroom apartments to three persons and the two-bedroom units to five persons. And it would be required that the exact locations and type of plant materials be approved by the zoning administrator and coordinated with the city's York Street Improvement Projects. So to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, Council would need to approve Proposed Ordinance Number 15-11.
Great. Thank you very much, Reed. Any questions? We have discussed this multiple times. Thank you, Reed. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Pons, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, I'm Doug Pons. This is my proposal, and it's been well discussed, and I just want to really thank you all for taking the amount of time that you did to deliberate to get us to this point, so I appreciate your efforts, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Ron, welcome.
Mayor Holman, members of Council, my name is Ron Kirkland, the Executive Director of the WHMA. I would like to say I'm a little disappointed today that Council isn't flexible enough to move this meeting outside to picnic table at QuarterPath Park. It's pretty nice to have there. That aside, I'd come before you to speak in support of rezoning 614, 620 York Street. And in a related matter, Hotel Zoning Amendment, we generally support that as well, and we just ask that you consider maybe softening some of the language with regard to employees that live on-site. Maybe they don't have to be single and have a cellphone. Other than that, we like this, we like the zoning proposal. Thank you very much.
John Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm John Woodley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I would like to speak supportive of this ordinance as an individual, but I also have permission to speak on behalf of three organizations that I know each of you holds dear to yourselves. One would be the Williamsburg Unitary Universalist Social Justice Committee. We appreciate what you've done thus far and hope that you will move forward attending to the issues of affordable and accessible housing. Secondly, and this is new to Williamsburg, it's the Williamsburg Interfaith Network. It will be a chapter of the Virginia Interfaith Center for Public Policy. It is underway toward being structured. And lastly, at a meeting yesterday of the NAACP Education Committee, talking about the needs of children, access to fair and decent and affordable housing, they gave me the right to share their support also. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to Council for a discussion and action.
As you noted before, we've had quite a bit of discussion on this multiple times and at extended length, so I don't really have much more to say about the proposal. I do think it's worth noting, and so I want to thank the people who are putting the time and effort on this. Staff has done a lot of work on this, very much appreciate that. Planning Commission has been very patient, working with us. We appreciate their deliberations and flexibility and willing to review this and vote again. And also for the applicant, because this has been a process that's taken a while. And when you're in a business and you're trying to do something to help that business, and it takes time to get something accomplished, that costs money. And so obviously, it's for the applicant's best interest to see that it gets approved, but I just appreciate everybody's patience and effort.
I echo everything Paul said, and it's really, I'm glad we've been able to work through the outstanding issues and really build consensus around what is going to be a good project.
I have to agree. It's interesting how much has been in the Post and actually the Daily Press about housing recently and the need for housing and the whole tiny house move and all the kinds of things people are talking about. And I really do hope this project helps the housing issues in Williamsburg. We know we have a homeless problem that nobody wants to talk about, and I hope that we can, this will help somehow.
Yeah, and I would just echo that and say this has been a real effort by lots of dimensions of the community, lots of constituencies in the community, to make this happen. And I think it does provide a real model for not only this community but other communities to move forward in providing innovative ways to deal with housing issues. So again, I think I'll echo Paul's comments, both the applicant, the Planning Commission, the city staff, and the community have been involved in this, and it's ended up with a win-win, I think, for everybody, so thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Council approve Proposed Ordinance 15-11.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Thank you. The next agenda item is budget adoption. First, we have the budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015. This is Proposed Resolution 15-04, with all the schedules involved.
Yes, sir. The Bruno Plan, planning to do a presentation today, since we went through that on Monday, we'd certainly be happy to answer any further questions you may have, but we're ready to recommend the budget be adopted as presented.
Any questions for the city manager? And I do want to thank you and Jody and all the staff involved in this, who's just, once again, a very good, open, transparent budget process, and we've gotten to a very good budget, I think, and actually very close to where we were before the Great Recession hit. Finally, okay. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Resolution 15-04.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Next is the proposed water rate of 512 per thousand gallons. This is Proposed Ordinance 15-05.
Yes, sir. And the one item in the budget that needs to be adopted separately by ordinance is the water rate, so that's why that's included in the budget but then pulled out to be done by ordinance.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to say that I don't do this lightly. We're doing this for a very important reason, you know, going to be continued costs, and this schedule is one that's just responsible government.
And this has been a process of building a capability to deal with what's coming down the road. This will continue, but I think we've been foresighted in doing that, and the impact in any one-time period on our citizens is minimized, as well.
Right, this is part of a longer-term plan. It was put in place years ago, and now we're executing that in a way that doesn't place significant increases as a burden on the population all at once. We've been phasing it in, and yet we still have the lowest combined water and sewer rates in the region. I'm not bragging about that necessarily, but it's just, I'll let you do that. No, it's worth noting, even, and you know what? We owe that to the foresight of a council and a city government 50, 60 years ago.
Yes, sir.
Who made that decision to buy the Waller Mill Reservoir, and we're just very fortunate because they were able to make that investment.
Yeah, no question. You know, the, it's the challenges ahead that we do this. You know, on top of current water conservation, less use, less revenue coming in, you need to expand that revenue in there because it is going to become more challenging to meet EPA regulations and provide the service that the residents, you know, expect. So I, too, don't take it lightly, but am comfortable making this decision.
Yesterday, I went on a trip on the, well, we didn't go out into the Chesapeake Bay because it was too windy, but we were in Lynn Haven River with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and talking about the efforts to mitigate pollution in the bay. And we are, there were several representatives from several local governments on the trip, and we are way ahead of a lot of people in this area in terms of planning for what's coming. So again, 50 years ago, they made a good decision.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Council adopt Proposed Ordinance 15-05.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
And the next is the HREDA membership withdrawal, Proposed Resolution 15-05.
Yes, sir. Another item contained in the budget is redirecting the funds that have been going to membership in the Hampton Roads Economic Development Group and redirecting that money to be used with James City County and York County in a more local effort. So with the budget, that change has already taken place, but another step should be to formally then withdraw our membership from the revenue.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that because we're adopting a resolution to withdraw from group, it has a negative sound to it, but it's really a positive step because it's one more example of Williamsburg, James City County, and York County coming together in a partnership to benefit this area as a particular region and to work cooperatively on economic development and business recruitment. And it's easy to look around the community and say, oh, they keep building all these shopping centers so they can steal one business from the other. And that's not what our local governments are trying to do. We're trying to build an overall stronger combined effort, and by focusing our attention and focusing our resources directly in the greater Williamsburg area, James City County, York County, city of Williamsburg, we're going to be much more effective at it and in a way that we really need to be in this competitive environment. So I think it's a real positive move. I congratulate the three economic development directors for making this work, the three EDAs for working cooperatively, and I think this signals a new level of cooperation between the jurisdictions is just, in the long run, going to be another major positive step for the historic environment.
Can't say anybody no?
And I agree, and having, in doing this, it doesn't pit us against the entity that we're pulling out of. You know, we're still neighbors, we're still on this peninsula together, you know, we're all in this together. But this makes the tri-community area stronger, and it's, you know, we've been together for centuries now, working together. So I, you know, I think it's a positive step, and congratulations, Michelle, and to all the other EDA members, you know, to have developed this concept and put it to fruition. I think, you know, it shows great leadership.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Proposed Resolution 15-05.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Michelle, if you'll convey our thanks to the other EDA economic development directors and their EDAs as well, I think this has been a good process. Thank you.
Next agenda item, reports. First, on the monthly financial statements, Jack, anything in particular?
Just one thing I thought I'd point out this month. On page five, we often look at room tax, sales tax, and meal tax. We have had three months running, this is activity from January, February, and March, averaging a 12% increase on room tax over the same period last year. So obviously, we're all very hopeful that that trend will continue. Last year, we saw a decline of 7% from the prior year, so we have a long way to go. But that quarter is certainly encouraging.
Any questions, comments?
Just one comment. I agree with the city manager. The trend is encouraging. Challenge is, January, February, March are such a small overall piece of the year. If we can keep this trend going, and not that you and I are necessarily going to be doing that, but the community can keep this trend going, it could be really powerful, but we have to keep it going and continuing through the rest of spring into summer and the fall is going to be important, so.
I think the interesting numbers are going to be over the next couple of months when we see the...
Particularly July and August.
And then that's July and August.
Okay.
Just one real quick point. I know that last month, when we talked about it, we noticed that February was up in rooms sales, but meals were down, which I thought kind of drew the, kind of helped us understand how much, the impact of tourists that stay in rooms, what that impact is on meals. Because though room sales were up, you would think more people were in town, yet meals were down, and I think that was a product of being a cold, wet, snowy February, it kept the locals in, and so that's why room sales, meal sales were down. And so it has also affected, I think, the 1% sales tax being down for that same period. So, you know, when we talk about looking at return on investments and what is that indication? When we talk about return on tourism investment, what are the indicators? You know, I really wonder how much meals is an indicator of tourism spending, and I think, you know, these numbers kind of help add to the...
And I think that's something some analysis could pull out for that, as you look. But I think, I think what you're, what I'm looking for is what's happened, given the busy spring we've had and what's going to happen in the summer, and we'll get a better indication there because of the winter times, the numbers are so small that you get anomalies in them that really, so I think the message there is, stay tuned.
Anecdotally speaking, when you, when you look at local restaurant business, you know, from late spring through the summer, the volume is so far greater than it is in those early months. And so it's, you know, as running a business, you have a base, you need that base, but it's that extra percentage that puts you in the profitability range that's critical.
Which is what I think the hotel industry's been advocating for years when they say in the summer, because that's the time of the year where, you know, they have the best opportunity to make the extra money and help cash flow through the lean months.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
I had nothing this morning.
Any questions? If not, that brings us to city manager reports, and the first is the hotel motel length of stay, zoning amendment, Proposed Ordinance 15-12.
Ask Mr. Nestor to give this report.
The zoning ordinance, as part of the hotel motel definition, had limited the length of stay for hotels and motels to not more than 90 consecutive days with a number of exceptions. And ordinance removing the length of stay regulations from the zoning ordinance was approved in April and will take effect on July 1st. The July 1st date was chosen to give Council time to amend Article 9 of the city code, licenses, permits, and business regulations, now contains regulations for hotel guest registration. So the... So the length of stay criteria are proposed to be moved to this rewritten article of chapter nine. I won't go over all of the changes. You have those in your memo, but just a few of them. A definition for visitor has been added, which is for someone who stays for thirty consecutive days, secures transient lodging in any hotel motel for consideration, provided that the visitor's principal place of residence is not the room or suite occupied by the visitor. And length of stay is limited to thirty days and a sixty-day period with a number of proposed exceptions. For extended stay hotels, those which contain complete kitchen facilities, they are exempt. This is an existing exemption in our zoning ordinance. Where there's a written contract or document between a hotel motel and a business corporation, firm, college, or university, or government agency to house employees or individuals who are engaged in employment activities for the business corporation, firm, college, or university, or government agency, either as an employee or an independent contractor pursuant to a written contract, that is exempt from the thirty-day length of stay. The written contract or documentation has to be kept on file at the hotel or motel. This is a new exception proposed. And where there's a written contract between the hotel motel and the city's human services department to house families in crisis who are receiving temporary housing assistance from a government charitable insurance agency, that is exempt, provided that documentation is on file. And this is another new exception from the thirty-day length of stay. Where rooms or suites are occupied by employees of the hotel, that is exempt, provided that employees work at least twenty hours a week, and this is limited to employees only, not including dependents or family members. This is an existing exemption, and this is a language that is in the current zoning ordinance. And also, in addition, a room or suite with kitchen facilities may be occupied by the owner or onsite manager and their family, and that does not have a maximum length of stay. That's another existing exception. And my final comment is, as is the case with the ordinance taking the length of stay out of the zoning ordinance, this would become effective on July first of this year, so the two would design to work together. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Reed. Any questions?
I have one question for Mr. Nestor. And I'm thinking, I guess, about eight B. In the past, we've had situations where the college unexpectedly had dorms go out of commission a couple of times by fire and, I believe, for other reasons. How does that play into this? Because it says with the university, it's only for an employee or contractor.
That is not covered in this proposal. We did have a provision... We did at one point have a provision that allowed that use in the museum support district when a portion of Governor's Inn was used for some temporary housing. That is not in the ordinance at this point, and of course, since that time, the college has acquired the hospitality house to expand their housing that's available. In the case of a catastrophic fire, say, that displaced a whole dormitory, I guess that is something that would have to be dealt with at that time.
And the reason I ask is that it's usually a situation that requires something pretty quickly, and I don't know how we would... I'm not saying we have to address it today, but if we could just think about a mechanism for that, we hope we never have to use it.
I guess one of my questions is, how was that dealt with in the past when those events occurred? Because many of these regulations have been on the books for a while, so.
Reed, was it part of the ordinance before and was not carried over?
Well, that, with these changes, that nothing is being deleted with these changes. Now, the Jefferson dorm fire, that was before my time, so I'm not sure how that...
I don't think we've done it as a true emergency since these ordinance have been in place.
So, yeah, I guess my real question is, if that happened, given this ordinance in place, if that happened, what are our options for dealing with it?
Well... First of all, in the time that this could take place, if we needed to get back to council and make... Put a provision in the ordinance, we would have the time to do... We'd have the thirty days to do that. So I'm not worried about the... If a hotel were needed today for that purpose, it could be used for that purpose. Having said that, this may be something that we can anticipate and put in the ordinance, and there may be some other things that we'll discover as well over time. So I could well see that be an amendment to the ordinance. I wouldn't not do it today for that reason, but I think it's something that could come back.
No, I don't think what needs to be done today, but I think something should be looked at.
Yeah, maybe just follow up on that. And just my database is spinning here. Didn't we create an ordinance specific for hotels in the MS district, museum support district, that allowed for rental to college students?
Right, and that was the Governor's Inn.
That was the Governor's Inn.
That was put in place because of, at the beginning of the year, they would often have transfer students coming in when all the housing was allocated, and that provided a safety valve for that.
Right. So, but maybe in that, that allows for emergency use of hotels. It could be the Governor's Inn, Woodlands, the Lodge.
Well, when the other dorm burned down, it was the student who moved into the current motel A.
That was Jefferson.
Jefferson.
That was a common time ago.
It was the Commonwealth Inn.
Nineteen eighty.
Okay. Something we need to give some more thought to.
Reed, could you explain the reasoning behind the limitation of employees only and not including dependents or guests of employees?
Now, that was done a good while ago, and as I recall, that was done to address the issue of housing employees. And at the time, housing families of employees was not an issue, so it was narrowly written just to address the need as we perceived it at that time.
There's an inconsistency between that and what's available to the manager. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be worth taking a look at that and seeing if we can't make those more consistent, because I'm not sure that sort of saying, you know, because the manager and their family can live in a suite with what have you, you know, this would cover a single employee, but what if they have a family? Do we want to provide the flexibility for that to happen? And I wonder if it might be worth, along with these other things, giving some thought to sort of, could we change that in a way that would create that flexibility?
The way this is written, it implies that the kitchen facilities are what make the difference between the family and the single person. That's what I'm reading. So maybe that's the issue.
But if an employee and a family, you know, if a twenty-hour-plus-a-week employee and their family could live there in a, you know, suite with a kitchen facility or however that's defined for the manager, would that be... I would not see that be consistent with sort of the thrust here, but...
Well, it seems to me that, I think what we're trying to do is stop the use of families living in hotel rooms. And I get that, but I think on a practical... There are some, you know, and I think there are some rooms that are rented to employees that that employee, this is their part-time job and they work somewhere else, but they usually have a spouse or, you know, a significant other, maybe a child, with maybe just adequate cooking, you know, microwave and a refrigerator. And I think that that would be helpful for the industry to allow that type of use versus taking out of the ordinance altogether to say, no, you can't even do that.
I mean, I'm not sure I'm going to stop to change this in the way we are today, but I would like to look at that and have you guys come back to us with some proposed options for looking at that. Does that make sense?
Something in conjunction, you know, with fire and safety regulations and building codes and that type of thing. I don't think we want to usurp those, you know, those ordinances or laws.
I don't think we can.
Right. Or do something that would conflict with them.
Right, 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 right.
Is that...
Yes, and this with the other issue we just talked about, we can give some thought to that and come back in a month, maybe two, with a recommended amendment.
Can I ask one other...
Well, I was just going to follow up on Mr. Kirkland's point about the registration requiring a phone number. Everybody has a phone. And so, you know, I don't know how important that is, but that might be something we consider adjusting.
If you would let staff talk about this, consult with us at E D B, and then come back with several options that would lay out sort of what the issues are and how we might do.
And one other issue, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The, I guess, and I'm looking for it, but there's an opportunity for enforcement. And I'm trying to recall, Michelle, tonight, we spoke about this last month, when does a city employee get to come onto any property? And I think the code read, and I know you'll correct me because I'm sure I'm wrong, but unless there's an emergency, enforcement agent, whether it be law or fire or codes, compliance, has to come to the front desk and announce themselves. And I think that's kind of written here, but it's a little bit different than the code was.
Number four. Go to the top.
Fire inspection is one, yeah, and zoning administrator. So, and to that, just from a, you know, personal property rights or business owners rights, you know, I can see a member of law enforcement that comes for safety purposes. There's a, you know, a fight or violence or shoot or something, and that police officer shows up and has to do something, and that makes sense. Same with fire emergency, but to have an inspection, even today, the fire marshals go to a property and announce themselves, we're here to do an inspection, you know, and if nobody's available to take that person, they set up an appointment. That, to me, is an appropriate thing to do, and I think adding the zoning administrator to it, and I think the zoning administrator was in there previously, I just wonder if that, if we shouldn't differentiate zoning from other inspectors, police and fire, just because of the relative importance of them.
Where's the... No, I mean, I see section four, but where's the... Where would that be?
What's the question?
It's our article.
Yeah, so I see that, but under enforcement on section nine dash three seven three enforcement. Any law enforcement personnel or zoning administrators authorized and shall have the authority to enforce provisions, of course they should, and shall have access to all reasonable times to the hotel motel except for private room, guest rooms, unless authorized by the laws and ordinance. So maybe it's there.
Well, I think this might be a discussion you could have with the city attorney, and we can resolve that and come back with a suggestion or resolution with these other...
Yeah, I'll have that discussion and see if we think this should be restrained in any way beyond what it is.
And anything else? Is that... Give you guys enough information?
Gives us the list. Certainly. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to have a motion if I could.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the adoption proposed ordinance fifteen dash twelve.
If I may.
Yes.
So we're going to approve this and then adjust it later?
Yes.
Or are we going to wait to get the changes and then approve?
Because, well, the changes are relatively minor, and since this is no longer a zoning
ordinance, it can be changed at any meeting. It doesn't need to go through the process that it used to have to go through. So I think we could, at the next meeting, modify.
That's actually before it goes into effect.
Yeah, it's not going to go into effect until July one anyway. This way, you know, the vast majority of it is, you know, not going to be modified, and we'll have to look at the options, and it's not clear at this point what we're going to do.
Sure.
So we can do it either way. I would propose we go ahead and pass it as is and then come back and make any amendments.
I would rather do it right the first time, and so, and since what we... What we're changing doesn't go into effect until July first, we're not... We'd have until June to get it right to have something go into effect.
That is true. We could do it that way. I do think there's a value to the industry to know primarily the major points that are changing, the ninety days going to thirty days, the requirements in terms of record-keeping, so we could begin to communicate that and let people know that this change is coming. And we could still, because it may even take... I hope we can have everything next month, but if it... I don't... I can't guarantee it.
It seems to me these are fairly small parts of what is a much larger ordinance that has many more impacts. And so I think, as Jack suggested, having that in place provides a better framework for the industry to understand what's going on, and then those modifications can be made because it's now no longer... So on zoning ordinance, it's a regular ordinance, those could be made at any time.
What is the strategy to notify these people? You mentioned that you're going to start notifying people.
Sure. We, the zoning administrator, and we have a team that is working together on the issues of enforcement, and it's kind of on hold, waiting for the new standards to be adopted, primarily the ninety to thirty days. And then we do need, with that group, to let all our hoteliers know about the change that that's in effect. So whenever council adopts it, then we'll begin that notification process, communication.
Okay.
I don't feel strongly either way.
You know, and if it's the will of council, I'll support it, and as long as we come back and fix it. It's just, I know that we try to do things in a clean, efficient manner with everything we do, and it just seems that since we've asked some questions, we've got staff going back to do some revisions, that maybe we ought to see them and then refer it at once.
What if we just... I don't even know if we need to vote on it, but just authorize the city manager to start conveying the major points. But is that more complicated because then they have to go back and tell me what the other things are? But they have... We'd have to contact him twice anyway.
Yeah. Well, I'm more concerned about... I don't want, until council acts on the big changes, I don't want to send that council plans to do this. I'd rather say council's done that.
So there's... Yeah, no notification's going to go out until the changes come in January?
No, no, sir. No. If you adopt the ordinance today, the major points, which are unchanged, we'll get that word out, those are the major points. Some of these finer points would come on with the change, and those will be a lot easier to deal with in terms of getting people... I'm concerned that people that have tenants that are beyond thirty days, they can begin to plan that and know that come July one, that the standard will be thirty days and not ninety days. So I think that's the advantage of acting today on the big points.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think that's fair, too.
I made a motion.
Second.
I have a motion. And second, would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
And I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Did your motion include these amendments, future amendments being brought to council in June? Or was it...
No, and I don't think we can do that because there isn't any...
Yeah, I think we have to approve this ordinance, and then we've certainly... Yeah, I think we have to approve this ordinance, and then we certainly have already directed staff to come back to us with proposed modifications on.
And we'll definitely bring them back to you in June. If something's not quite right, we'll tell you that, but we'll come back in June.
Have a motion. Second, would you call the roll please, Chair?
Mr. Newton. Aye. Mr. Pons. Mr. Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Post.
Aye. Next city manager report is the QuarterPath Community Development Authority Special Assessment Agreement. This is proposed Ordinance 15-07.
Yes, sir. The recommendation from the QuarterPath Community Development Authority and their council is that a modification be made to the special assessment agreement and trust indenture for the bonds which the authority issued and council issued a few years back for the improvements at QuarterPath at Williamsburg. The change is fairly simple. It's to change from half a million dollars down to $25,000. The increment of bonds that can be repaid or retired as properties are sold from the developer to end users and end purchasers. So, that's what this change does. And in addition to that, we also have representatives here from the developer, Tracy Dowling with Riverside, and she's going to give a little presentation and bring us up to date on where things are with the development. But before we do that, we have this first item of business.
Any questions?
No.
Comments?
Mr. Tuttle, do you see any downside to this?
No, sir, not at all. Just gives a little more flexibility, a little more efficiency.
So, they can pay it off in smaller chunks and retire portions of it more quickly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the city council adopt resolution 15-07.
Second.
Have a motion. A second, would you call the roll please, Chair?
Mr. Newton. Aye. Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Post.
Final city manager report is the discontinuance of the regional issues committee. This is proposed resolution.
Mr. Mayor, we have one, we're still.
Oh, just a little.
Sorry. Tracy Dowling is.
Tracy, sorry, I got ahead of myself.
No problem. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Tracy Dowling. I'm the Assistant Director for Real Estate and Business Development from Riverside Health System. Mr. Tuttle asked for me to come today. He felt that this was a great opportunity to bring you up to speed with what has been completed in the QuarterPath development and some of the development that's taking place, particularly in relation to the CDA bond financing that we've been utilizing to a great good. It's really actually helped us to really launch the project.
Sure. Start at the top, that's your pointer. There you go.
I'll first go through some of the improvements that have been completed using the CDA financing. And with me today is Mr. Jeff Holder. He's with our development consultant team, and he's also an engineer. So, if there's any real technical questions that you might have, Mr. Holder will probably be better to address those particular questions. With our CDA financing, we have been able to complete the most visible portion of the infrastructure and public improvements has been Battery Boulevard and a portion of Commonwealth Avenue that provides access to Riverside Doctors Hospital. With the Battery Boulevard entrance here off of Route 60, we also had to perform some improvements along Route 60, which included the improvement, aesthetic improvement of bearing some of those overhead power lines and the left-hand turn lane coming this way off of Route 60. We also put in the roundabout 1 and roundabout 2, as well as the Village Green area here in the center of the development. Along Battery Boulevard, we have constructed sidewalks, and along Commonwealth Avenue, sidewalks here, and also a multi-just path along Battery Boulevard on this end of the development, as well as streetscape and landscaping along Battery Boulevard here and some within this area right here. Also, with the CDA financing, we've included or we've improved water and sewer utilities for the project. We put in a pump station right here and constructed sewer lines all along the property here, which are set to accept development in the future, sanitary sewer lines and a pump station. And we've also put in stormwater management, BMP structures here and a temporary one here that is serving the development along this area here. In addition, we've achieved approvals from DEQ and the Corps of Engineer to utilize Tutter's Neck Pond as a regional stormwater management facility, as has been in the comprehensive plan for the city for quite some time. That was certainly one of the key points for why we went ahead and purchased Tutter's Neck Pond, so we could use that for that purpose. In addition to the CDA funding that has taken place to put in this infrastructure and public utilities, one of our proffers was to put in the water tank, which is located here. $1.6 million was contributed by Riverside for the development of that water tank. For the project update, really with the development of Battery Boulevard and the access now to the development, it has really started to launch interest in the project, and I think you've seen that with some of the activity that's taking place today. Just a reminder, in the Economic Development District, this portion of the QuarterPath property, it is zoned ED, and that allows us, along with our proffers that we proffered, we can develop about 1,000 residential units in this area right here. Also, in the master plan, there are plans for 400,000 square foot of medical office space or some type of healthcare-related space, as well as approximately 500,000 square feet of commercial space. The commercial space, right now, we are targeting mostly Class A business office space, and we feel that that's one of the areas that's somewhat lacking in our community. There's a lot of retail space that can be used here in our community, so we're targeting the commercial space along with the economic development help from our local entities. What we've tried to do in the middle of the development with the Village Green, we're trying to really establish a sense of place with getting traffic into the development, and it seems to have really started to take place because we're garnering quite a bit of interest now, an increased interest. Of course, the first development in the QuarterPath project was Doctors Hospital, $41 million in construction and $64 million of total project cost. We're currently employing 220 full-time or part-time employees at that facility. Bonaventure was our next development to come online, and they are projected to open June of this year. Bonaventure is developing Aura at QuarterPath Luxury Apartments, 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartments, with a projected construction cost of about $25 million. Our next development came in with HH Hunt, a projected and a planned 115 townhome development. They are a mixture of 20-foot and 35-foot wide townhomes, and those go along right in this area right here along Prospect Street and North Ridge Streets, where these two streets are. We will be closing, hopefully, next week on a five-acre parcel right here, which we have been calling Hoofsmill. That development, that parcel is being sold to SL Nessbaum, in which they intend to continue the type of retail development that they have across the street at the QuarterPath Crossing Shopping Center. So, we're really excited about that. They do quality work, and we think that they'll do just as high a quality work there. We do have interest in particularly this parcel right here for additional development with some commercial development and some residential development in this parcel. We have had some interest in what we're calling the Readout Ridge area, which is single-family and multifamily housing. That interest hasn't quite met our expectations, and we're not going to, we're not going to lower our expectations just to develop this in a short-term type of fashion. So, that's the update on QuarterPath. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Tracy, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a couple. The apartments will open in June?
Yes. One of the buildings, the one in the middle, which is right here, and it actually has their community room in it and a pool, et cetera, that serves the apartment buildings here. There's three apartment buildings, one here, here, and here, and this one in the middle will be the first one to open.
And do you have a timeline on the rest of those buildings?
They project that the rest of the buildings will come online sometime in the October, November timeframe.
And they're currently leasing?
They are currently leasing, as is HH Hunt is currently selling. This was what was really related to the amendment that you just approved a few minutes ago. When we're selling these, this 115 townhome development to HH Hunt, they're taking them down in blocks, and so we were having difficulty meeting that 500,000 threshold, taking them down in blocks. So, that's why we requested and worked with the CDA board to provide that amendment. But their first block of townhomes is right in this area here, and they are on the market and selling now, and I believe one is under contract, I think.
So, that block is completed, or the whole?
It's under construction right now.
Okay.
But their sales office is open right here on this corner, right by this second roundabout, and seeing some activity.
And just one comment. It sounds a little strange, maybe, to be excited about a road, but the way Battery Boulevard has been built, it's really attractively done. And I know it's going to look vastly different when the rest of the residential and the commercial come in, but it sets the right spine or infrastructure for real quality development around it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Scott?
Ms. Dowling, can you provide any sort of timeline for Readout Road?
Not until we hit on the type of interest level that we really want to see up here. We're actually working with Planning Commission now to look at the opportunity for at least building the crossing here, maybe not the road, which may bring more interest to, you know, the level of interest that we want in that area.
Very good. Thanks.
Just a comment. You know, we're all very excited about this whole development coming. It's been in the works for many years now, and, you know, you really see the fruits of everybody's labor, particularly Riverside's. And, you know, one of the things that I hear around is quality. And I hope as you progress in talking to other developers that you'll be mindful that, you know, we want quality, we want buildings that are designed to last, not throwaway buildings that, you know, go 20 years and tear them down and you do it again. But, so, as you seek developers or potential buyers for this real estate, hopefully you'll communicate that, you know, we would like to make sure that quality is one of the standards. And I know that's a vague term, but I think we all know what that means, and so, that was my only comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pons. Riverside appreciates that position, and I can assure you, we hold that position just as strongly as you do because we are here in this community, and it reflects upon us and our hospital and other development that we plan to do there around that hospital. So, we want quality around us.
Good. Thank you.
Judy?
Tracy, at one point, there was a plan for a nursing home, or is that gone, still in the works?
It's not completely gone, but with further review of the market and other developments in the market that has taken place, we felt that at this time, it wasn't quite the right time to bring that type of development to QuarterPath.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it seems to me that's consistent with your efforts to really expand the ability of people to age in place.
Yes, sir.
Which I think is really probably the long-run solution to this. So, I think you're wise to sort of put some effort into really thinking about how do we make it easier for people to age in place and thus reduce the need for those types of facilities, at least for the time. So, I applaud you on that because I think it's, I think that's one of the keys to the future for some. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Well, Tracy, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, we would like to personally thank Mr. Tuttle and the work that he has done with us, beside us, for us, with the development of the QuarterPath project. He has really seen the vision all the way and has been one of our key champions, and we greatly have appreciated that.
Thank you. So noted. Thank you. Now we can get to, sorry. The next item is the discontinuance of the Regional Issues Committee. This is proposed Resolution 15-06.
Well, I'll kick it off, but there's some experts in the room on this that could probably answer questions better than I. But the Regional Issues Committee has taken action themselves to believe their time to sunset has come, and Ms. Newton has served on the committee for the city, so she can speak to that, as well as Mr. Nestor, who has staffed this committee and done a lot of the work that's brought it to the point that it's here today. So, the recommendation is that council adopt the resolution, which would discontinue the Regional Issues Committee insofar as the city is involved with it.
I'll note that Councilwoman Newton's connection to this goes way back. She was the original staff person for when it was known as the Growth Commission.
Yes, I was.
And Mr. Fryling served for a number of years as the city rep on.
Countless.
Countless years. And I served even more countless years as the college representative to this. So, we do have a fair amount of experience on council with this. With that, I'll turn to council for any comments.
I'm going to start with Ms. Newton.
Judy, you go back to the origins.
I certainly do. Lo, that was many years ago, 1987. I was the staff, along with a part-time secretary, and the world was a very different place. This was a very different place in 1987. There were, the reason the commission began was because of the lack of coordination among the three jurisdictions. It was funded by Columbia-Williamsburg and the college, which wanted to see cooperation among the jurisdictions, and we got it. It actually, there were 99 recommendations from the commission. The Regional Issues Committee was one of them, and the idea was to foster more cooperation among the jurisdictions, and that is working. When this started, we didn't have planners that even talked to each other. We didn't have economic development authorities to talk to each other. We were three separate little jurisdictions going our own way, and we now have multiple areas of cooperation. And in the last few years, I think those other entities have made the Regional Issues Committee no longer necessary because the function has been taken over by others, other entities in the community. And I think all too often in government, you start something and it never stops. It goes on and on and on, past its expiration date. And I think it's time for some things to expire, and I think this is one of them. So, I would hope that you would, that you all would agree and that the other two jurisdictions would take similar action on this resolution. We can always bring it back if something happens that we all say, we need a forum for this, we can bring it back. But at this point, I think it's a government operation that we no longer need to have.
Paul, you chaired this for a number of years.
A couple of times. Well, and the way it works, for those who aren't familiar, the chairmanship or chairwomanship of the committee rotates every year between the three jurisdictions. The staffing of the committee likewise rotates every year between the three jurisdictions, where the community that's in the chair seat then has the planning staff staff the committee. I think that structure alone created an operational challenge because you have staff that already have full-time jobs that then take on this additional effort. The regular transition of leadership also created problems because it was difficult to have any level of consistency when you couple that with the fact that, more so with the two counties, their representation would change regularly. So, that consistency. So, that consistency of membership was a challenge. Even so, I think there was still some good conversations. I think the effort that was undertaken to synchronize the timing of the comprehensive plans was worthwhile. But it was really the creation of the Historic Triangle Collaborative that did the Regional Issues Committee in, because it created another venue where regional issues would be discussed, that then had a funded, full-time staff that was paid for by all the jurisdictions, and the attention to the Regional Issues Committee just -- it wasn't great to begin with, but it was even less after that. And then it seemed like it was a duplicative effort, because you have some of the same things being talked about at the HTC, then they're spoken about at the Regional Issues Committee, and often it just, it didn't seem to make sense after that. So, if the committee has voted to disband, it would seem odd for us to deny that request.
Scott?
Paul's final point in particular. You know, when I first heard about this not having the context that you all do, I'm like, "Well, we need to find them another purpose." Subject to Judy's perception on things not going away, but based on your all's perspectives, it seems like the air is already out of this balloon.
Having served on the Regional Issues Committee as well, you know, I look forward to those meetings, as it did afford the opportunity to participate in that regional discussion, and I always felt that the Regional Issues Committee had a purpose. And I think it could still have a purpose if we gave it purpose. But if it's deflated and gone, and we're at this point, and, you know, we should move on, if the interest isn't there to keep it going. With that said, I think the process in which we got to this point was a little out of kilter. I think I would have liked to have had this conversation about the Regional Issues Committee and whether this body would support disbanding it. Would have liked to have that before, you know, our city staff, you know, got involved in writing a resolution and proposing it to the committee. It almost sounded like it was happening without this body.
I was there.
Well, and I appreciate that, and so, to that, maybe we should have shared it with the rest of us, and I think, you know, we all work collectively, and we're supposed to report back to this body. You know, at work sessions, we have the opportunity to convey certain things, or things that we participate in. And I don't say that to be critical, but I would have liked to participated in the conversation going into it. So, aside from that, you know, it is true that, as Vice Mayor Fryling says, that a lot of this is, the need for the RIC has gone away, because we now have the HTC. And I get that. But it reminds me of everything that I think is wrong with the HTC, because it's not open to the public. And, gosh, if we don't need the RIC because we are working together through our EDAs and our comprehensive plan process is there, we're communicating, we're working more closely together as a tribe-community area, then maybe we need to reevaluate our participation in the HTC. I think we ought to have that conversation, and maybe not whether that goes away, but how that HTC operates, and frankly, who participates in it. Because I think if we're talking about public interest and working, the three jurisdictions working together for the public, that's one thing. But when you involve private industries, Colonial Williamsburg, Busch Gardens, it puts a different onus on it. And I don't know that that's an appropriate conglomeration of people that meet outside of the public purview. So, I just, I think we ought to have that discussion about the HTC and how we participate in that, and I know it's a different discussion, so I'll support the resolution of disbanding the RIC, but not if we think that the HTC is the answer, because it's not the answer to me.
I agree with that. I think in addition to what's been said here about sort of the ways coordination and communication and cooperation occurs sort of across the board in ways that even 10 years ago it didn't, it's dramatically changed. But I think also a measure is the difficulty of getting a forum in the Regional Issues Committee was a signal that, you know, citizen appointees most often were not there. It was the regional, the governmental and other regional. And I think that the question of sort of the Historic Triangle Collaborative, which is really a continuation of the Jamestown 2007 Host Committee, because that really did work very well to bring sort of the major players together and do something positive for the community. I think that the view of how could we continue that was the basis for the HTC. Maybe the question to ask HTC is, are there parts of the role of the HTC that could be more open and transparent to the community? Rather than sort of thinking about, is there another way? It seems to me we have an entity in place, and it may be a question of what role does that entity play in a broader public discussion? So, and I think that is an issue that both HTC and Altamont should have.
Sure. So, again, one thing has nothing to do with the other, and so, I'll support the resolution, but I would like to have a consensus or commitment from this body that I think we need to evaluate the HTC, our expectations of it, and how we participate in it as we move forward. I think it's time that we have a real serious dialogue about that.
Can I make a comment? A lot of the makeup of the HTC is similar to the makeup of what will have been the Regional Issues Committee. There are some differences, but it's not drastically different. The real difference is that the HTC meetings are not open to the public. And I think with the dissolution of the RIC, that puts much more pressure on that, and I think they should be open meetings. I don't know what you meant by evaluate our participation. I think we should participate in it, as long as the meeting's open, and figure out the way to make it as effective as it possibly can be.
And so, to that, I think evaluate our participation in this organization. I think we ought to look at what this organization, who makes up this organization by way of entities, and whether what we hope to garner from that participation can be met by having the structure the way it is.
So, do you see the open meeting?
Oh, absolutely. I think it needs to be. We just approved the budget, and in our budget, we're sending $6,500 to go to support staff and other activities, I think it's $6,500, to support the HTC. I think it's incumbent upon us to know what goes on, and have it --
And not even us. I mean, it was --
Us.
It's our money, you know. It's the public's money. So, they have the right to know.
Yes.
Yes. I agree with that.
Issues for further discussion.
Right.
Meanwhile, we have Proposed Resolution 15-06.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Resolution 15-06.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Chair?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Mollman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
City Attorney reports, I believe we have none. Unfinished business?
Well, we have some, which is not --
New business. At this time last year, I announced that the localities will have representation on the Executive Committee and the Chamber of Commerce. That relationship will continue into next year. That was decided this week.
Is that just for another year?
It's just for another year. So, we're going to reevaluate it on a year-to-year basis. We're getting there.
So behave.
Yeah, I do hope so.
Mr. Fryling.
Mr. Mayor, I have some business to attend to here. Effective immediately, I move the City Council appoint Andrew Edwards to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2018, and Ray Warner to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire December 31, 2016. Effective July 1, 2015, I move the City Council appoint Latizia Gambralboon to the Library Board for a term to expire June 30, 2019, and Hazel Braxton to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board for a term to expire June 30, 2018. And effective July 1, 2015, I move the City Council reappoint Rick Overe to the Economic Development Authority for a term to expire June 30, 2019. Major Don Janderup to the Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program for a term to expire June 30, 2018. Bob Leek to the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2018. And Peter Wallantish to the Social Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30, 2017. Also effective May 22, 2015, I move the City Council appoint David Julian to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Chair?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Mollman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Aye.
And one further appointment. This is the reappointment to the Beautification Awards Committee, and these are mayoral appointments, effective July 1, 2015. Leslie Bowie, Robert Grossman, and Nina Mustard are reappointed to the Beautification Awards Committee for terms to expire June 30, 2016. Okay. I think that takes care of our appointments. That brings us to our final agenda item for today, which is open forum. A time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. I have two speakers' cards. The first is Ron Kirkland. And Ron, you already spoke, okay? Second I have is Gary Shelley. And I'll remind speakers that we do have a three-minute limit.
Mayor, I thought it was five minutes.
It's three minutes. We started with three minutes. We talked about going to five. We --
I watched last week, last month, and --
There was no decision there. There was a discussion about going to five, but the consensus was to leave it at three for the time being, and then to consider going to five at a later time.
I have rehearsed my presentation for today, and it came in just under five minutes. I believe in order to be most effective, it's probably better that I rewrite this and see you next month, or make an attempt to --
Mr. Mayor, I think the consensus of council, please, you may have five minutes.
Well, thank you. Much appreciated by everybody. So, I have Gary Shelley, and I live at 205 Hennings Springs Road. Two of your constituents, Mr. Philip Christoffersen and Mrs. Wanda Christoffersen, have asked me to advocate on their behalf, which I have done on numerous occasions, and which I do so again today. The Christoffersens feel the city has disrespected them. The city made numerous unwarranted intrusions onto their property, which upset them very much. Their attempts to communicate with the Director of Code's Compliance went unheeded and unanswered. Multiple attempts by three people to elicit a response from you, the mayor of this town, also went unheeded and unanswered. And most recently, our city manager has informed them that he has addressed their concerns, and I quote, "To the extent he intends to do so," unquote, in spite of the fact, there are issues yet to be addressed. Our government is founded on trust between our leaders and the public. On March 1 of 2008, the City of Williamsburg adopted a code of ethics comprised of core values and ethical standards. The core values include integrity, caring, accountability, respect, and equity. Mr. Christoffersen has stated that the city made numerous intrusions onto their property, and over a two-year period, the occurrences escalated. A FOIA request proves his claim, and they have copies of strongly worded emails sent to our Director of Code's Compliance with unsayable language that they were extremely upset by these intrusions, and which I have previously read to you. I've spoken directly to you on their behalf on many occasions over the past year, yet you have chosen not to respond to their concerns. In October, Mr. Christoffersen spoke to you here at the council meeting, and you chose not to respond to him. Mr. Christoffersen delivered a letter to you at that time, written by Mrs. Christoffersen, specifically asking for a response. She received none. At three subsequent meetings, I spoke to you of their concerns of not having been responded to, and each time, you did not offer the courtesy of a response. Mr. Tuttle was blissful in the matter. He denied. Our code of ethics states that city officials will oppose favoritism. Nevertheless, the Christoffersens feel as if they have been treated like second-class citizens, and that other citizens would not have been ignored by our city officials as they have been. They rightfully feel they have been disrespected by you. Our code of ethics specifically states that we shall treat all with dignity, courtesy, and tolerance, as we would wish to be treated. Mayor, you and city manager Tuttle have willfully and repeatedly violated this code value. Our code of ethics states that we shall act with courage and honesty, but Mr. Tuttle's email stating that he has addressed the issue to the extent that he intends to do so is the action of coward. And Mayor, Mrs. Christoffersen found your contention that you spoke with her husband, when in fact you did not, to be not only dishonest, but a convenient way for you to dismiss her. Our code of ethics states that city officials shall accept responsibility for our actions and decisions. At the January meeting, you said that Mr. Tuttle had investigated the Christoffersens' complaints, but when given an opportunity to explain city actions, Mr. Tuttle deflected the issues in sidestep and irresponsible. The Christoffersens have been understandably hurt and offended by the city's handling of their legitimate concerns. I was saddened to read a copy of a recent letter that Mrs. Christoffersen sent to Mr. Tuttle, in which she unequivocally expressed the depths of ill-will created by a disrespect directed toward them by you and Mr. Tuttle. This must come to an end. Our city council is about to select a new city manager. The Christoffersens wish that above all else, that the selection be based on character, and that the new city manager be committed to the ideals listed in the city's code of ethics, and to be a person with the strength to call out those who don't. The Christoffersens demand respect. And for starters, what they must have now from you, as I step away from this podium, are two assurances. One, that you will respond to them, either at this time or later by mail or email, and explain to them why you repeatedly chose not to respond to the numerous efforts made either by them personally or by me acting on their behalf. And two, and most importantly, they want an explanation from you, how your performance as well of our city manager aligns with the city's code of ethics. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, we have some more close --
I know you're excited by this. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Mollman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session.